...up for a public hearing, a proposal of the Manor Gardens.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Mike Curran. I am with Manor Gardens. I don't know if you can flip the slides over for me, Patty. All right. I've just got about five or six slides to bring you through a project summary of Manor Gardens as we have a proposed TIF, proposed TIF project that we've aligned with the TIF committee on earlier or later last month. So Manor Gardens is seeking a TIF CEA for the new Manor Gardens Townhouse community, located at 54 College Avenue and 13 Maple Street at the north end of Waterville. Sorry, I've got this here. I don't know if we're working here. Can you click ahead? Perfect. I'll just stay with, if you could just stay with me on that. At 13 Maple Street at the north end of Waterville. We are seeking a 44% TIF for 25 years. Next slide, please. I know most of you guys have been with us for the whole project. I just wanted to do one quick overview slide of the project, of the team. So Manor Gardens is 100% family-owned and operated out of Waterville. It's founded by myself, my wife, Joey Tomel-Curran, and then Art and Connie Tomel, who is also here. Together, we own and manage multiple rental units across Waterville. And myself and my wife have managed our portfolio since 2011. And the Tomels, as you guys know, have dedicated their whole career to providing housing to Waterville for about 35 years, plus 36 this year. The build that you guys have probably all seen over the last few months is 100% locally managed and locally constructed. I've got a couple of the names here. I will not go through all of them. But our team is comprised of Maine Designated Build, Klein Electric, Ware Butler, Bacon Construction, Fowler's Roofing, and the like. And so the project that we're going to show you in a minute is pouring back into the town locally, which is frankly very important to us. And then lastly, 99% of all the lumber that we're pulling through for the Manor, or for Manor Gardens, has been built here in Maine, which is pretty cool. Most of it's coming from Ware Butler. So our mission here is to continue the legacy of providing safe, accessible housing with a community atmosphere, and you guys will see that in a second. So the project, next slide, please, is, this is, will be the finished product. This is what we're calling Phase One. The TIF that we're going to talk about in a couple of slides is for both phases. So I'll reference Phase One, Phase Two. Phase One is the nine buildings you see going up now, today, which is 20 units. Phase Two would be across the street. It is part of the TIF package over at 13 Maple. Like I said, it's comprised of two phases. These are the rent values here for the two-bedroom, around $13,500; the one-bedroom, $10,500. It's around 24,000 square feet, energy-efficient amenities and construction. And again, it attacks the crisis with housing that we have in the area with additional housing support that's premiumally constructed. So this is the project, as you guys can see, going up. So as far as the TIF, next slide, please. There's three reasons that we're here to ask for the TIF. So our development project meets multiple provisions of the TIF assistance program. These are the main three that we see. So in, from a provision standpoint, one of them is to increase the tax basis of the property by more than $500,000. We do achieve that. So the tax base will go from $95,000 right now on both of those lots to over $3 million by 2026. So mathematically, that's a 29%, 2,900 or 29x tax base value increase. So we checked that box 29 times. As far as the blighted, removal of a blighted area. So the Manor, as you guys know, the building had not been open for about three years prior to our purchase. The parking lot was a gathering place for Miss Green's drug use. When we took it over, we saw some of those unsightly things. The graffiti partially was marked with, the building rather, was marked with some graffiti. And then inside was musty, serious mold issues and complaints. And so it ultimately came down, as you can see now. So as far as checking that box of removal of blighted area, we checked that as well. And then lastly, it's the need to offset infrastructure and financing costs. So as you guys know, we've all been living through an incredible, almost three years, or three years now, through COVID. And through that, we were frankly developing our project at that time. And through that, through that phase, labor was up almost 40%. Fuel and energy up 100. Concrete products up 13. Plastic, 27. Lumber, 22. And so the result of that for us is a negative cash flow position in year one after the build. And so that negative position will last for three years approximately. And so frankly, as far as checking the last box on the TIF, which is needing to offset infrastructure and financing costs, and that's the last bucket that we check. And so, next slide, please. So from a implication standpoint, we took a leap of faith and moved forward with our project despite these huge cost challenges. But for TIF support, our current project would be at risk. The risks here are Phase One, so the final two buildings. So right now, you can see seven buildings are up. The final two would be at risk if we're not able to achieve TIF support. There's about six units that would come with that. There's the delay possibility or outright removal from the budget. Phase Two and Three would not move forward. So those 13 units across the street, which would be ready for Phase Two, would not move forward. And then we own, Manor Gardens owns Five Ash Street, which is what we're calling Phase Three. It's undefined, but the plan would be for additional housing in that area as well. That is just for clarification. That is not part of this TIF request. And then lastly, if the cash flow position was negative for more than three years, and even prior to, there could be an exit strategy, a sale. Because again, we cannot hold on that long. We can't hold our breath that long. From a P and L standpoint, it's a family business. So those, that is the but for. So that is why we need the help, the assistance for the project, for us to carry on with the build. I've got one more slide, if we could. It's very small, I apologize, but it's a spreadsheet of the actual physical TIF schedule and revenue. Essentially, at the bottom, that's the easiest part to read. We're requesting a 44% TIF over 25 years. It would be front-end loaded, 70% for the first four years to offset that heavy financial burden of the build, and then 50% for the remaining years with zero at the back of the last five. That would all go back to the city. So it's a 56% gain for the town. Again, on a cost basis that went from 99, or 95,000 to 3 million. And so that is the last slide I have here. Happy to take any questions at all. I'm just going to pop that up. That last slide, just for the summary. So again, Manor Gardens is local, very rich history here in Waterville. Our mission, again, is safe, quality, community housing. We meet multiple criteria for the TIF. And again, we're seeking 44% TIF for 25 years. So that is our story. And if there's any questions, we're prepared to take, to take any and all questions.
Any questions? No?
Please, Rebecca.
Whether there are any affordable units in this project?
Yeah, it's a great question. So three of them in Phase One will be, if you could click, oh, that's okay. Three of them in Phase One will be affordable housing units. So that is, of the 20 units on Phase One, three of them would be affordable housing. That's correct.
And is that at 60%?
It is at 80%.
80%?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah.
You're doing those three units because of a TIF you got from the county, correct?
Yes, we worked with, we applied for ARPA funding to partially offset other costs. And we were able to achieve NMO. Yes, that's right.
And that's a condition of that money?
Correct. Yep.
Anyone else? Anyone from the public? Oh, Claude, I see the hand.
Hi, Claude. Go ahead. You're on mute, just a heads up.
Hello. Okay, no. My apologies for being late to the meeting. I was tied up at another meeting this afternoon. Did the city manager read the comments from the TIF committee?
I did not, Claude. I thought you were going to handle that.
I was, but I was not here. So let me, I don't have them in front of me. Would you be willing to do that for me, Bill?
Yep, I can do that, counselor.
Okay, thank you.
On December 12th, 2022, the TIF committee reviewed a proposal from Manor Gardens for an economic development TIF district. Excuse me. Although the proposed district is entirely housing, it was presented as an economic development district in part because prior to this development, the area had been commercial space that had been neglected. There will be 34 rental units in this project, with most of the units expected to be rented at market rates. The district being requested is for a 30-year term. The developer is asking for a credit enhancement agreement from the city that would have the city allocate 70% of the captured tax revenue from the project to the developer for the first four years of the term. For the next 21 years, the captured revenue would be shared equally between the city and the developer. Over the 30-year life of the district, the tax subsidy to the developer would be approximately $950,000 or $38,000 per year. The property currently is assessed, excuse me, at approximately $170,000 and is expected to be assessed at more than $3 million when completed. The TIF committee was concerned that the district was being proposed as an economic development district rather than a housing district, since the entire project is housing. Some members of the committee also thought that more of the units in the proposal should be classified as affordable housing. Nevertheless, the committee voted to recommend that council approve this proposed district. And again, as Council Frankie has said, that's the statement from the TIF committee.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Everyone, this is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Waterville City Council. There are agendas available in the file pockets in the front or on the City of Waterville's website. All items appearing on the consent agenda are voted on in one motion and vote. Generally, these items are routine in nature and do not require discussion. All items listed under unfinished business or new business are voted on separately. First, counselors will be given an opportunity for questions or comments. Once counselors have had an opportunity to speak, citizens will be given an opportunity for comments or questions. Citizens who would like to speak may do so. They have to identify themselves at the podium or online. Each citizen will be allowed one opportunity to speak and will be limited to three minutes. Finally, counselors will be given another opportunity to speak or comment. Citizens who would like to speak on a topic that does not appear on tonight's agenda will have an opportunity to do so under the public comment section of the agenda. Pledge of allegiance. All right. Disclosure of conflict of interest. Seeing none, I see a presentation for Competitive Energy Services.
Mr. Agnew, are you there? Yes. We can't hear you.
How is my audio? Can you hear me now?
A little bit better.
Okay, how about now?
Better.
Better.
Great. There's a little bit of feedback on your end. And once that's solved, it seems to be all right here. Good evening, everyone. My name is Charlie Agnew. I work for a company, Competitive Energy Services, in Portland. We represent the city of Waterville in a couple of energy-related areas, the two of which I can report on tonight. One, which you've heard from me before, which is your involvement and our assistance in entering three net energy billing credit agreements with three different solar projects. I'll provide an update on where those stand. We also represent the city in procurement of electricity supply for all city municipal accounts. And I can provide an update generally on where things stand there and what's going on in the energy markets and utility space in this state of Maine. First off, the city had entered into three of these net energy billing credit agreements, as I mentioned, projects that were being developed by U.S. Solar and two projects by a company, Renasola. You're probably seeing a lot of these solar projects being built right around town and throughout the area. There has been great reward to those projects that got going very early on, you know, start of 2020, when this net energy billing credit legislation was changed and passed in 2019. There were a number of projects that were more or less ready to go and got out ahead of some of the issues that have developed from a development perspective, of which are many, and we're not immune from here. I guess I can report on the bad news first, which is the two Renasola projects, one in Sanford and one in Harmony, Maine, are right now stuck in CMP's cluster study process, where they're being evaluated among other solar development projects in their respective areas and the general impact of those projects on the CMP distribution and regional transmission system. And generally, how these projects, these studies have gone for CMP is, first of all, each one of them has been delayed and by significant amounts of time. But also, kind of the process has been one where Central Maine Power has come back to the development community with some challenges, including, you know, necessary upgrades and very long lead times and high dollar value of cost to interconnect these projects. And the development community is pushing back and trying to find more cost-efficient ways to solve the challenges that are necessary to bring these projects online safely and in a reliable manner. And those two particular projects are unfortunately still kind of stuck in that process with fate right now unknown. I think the best possible outcome for those projects is they still can get built, but with certainty, there's going to be additional costs imposed on the developers by Central Maine Power for that interconnection. And what we'll need to determine, once we have that information from them, is whether it makes sense to continue with the projects or to terminate them and seek alternatives. But the city will have a choice there with those two Renasola projects. Some good news, or better news, I should say, is that the project being developed in, with U.S. Solar, their Togus project in Chelsea, Maine, that appears to be on a good track, that has a clear pathway to development and has reached in the development community a key milestone where there is actually a new owner since you first started this process. Actually, another company out of the Midwest that will be beginning construction on this project as soon as they can, this spring. And they're expecting to finish the project by the end of this calendar year, which I recognize is still a bit of a delay from what the city was expecting. But again, all of these projects have been challenged by the current environment, which sounds similar to any development story you've already heard this evening, which includes, you know, cost of financing, supply chain issues in particular. A lot of these panels, solar panels coming from across the seas have been challenged by threats of import tariffs, shipping logistics, you name it. And labor availability is also a challenge right now in Maine as there is a flood of activity in around this space. And we're building more solar in Maine in 2023 than the state's ever seen in history. So that's the good news, bad news. Again, on the projects that are facing challenges, there will be some decision points where we'll provide some guidance and a recommendation to the city as to whether or not to cut bait and go fishing or if there, you know, if we have alternatives, we'll find them. The market has just been very tight lately in terms of solar, given the amount of activity in this space and the general construction and financing environments. I guess we can save questions till the end. If I haven't bored you entirely already, I know I can with my next topic, which is electricity supply, a space where I spend every, each and every one of my days. And forgive me if you can't hear me. You all should be grateful. And I thank you for letting me join via Zoom, because I'm just getting over a pretty bad fever. So I'm glad I didn't have to share that with anyone this evening. But we also represent the city in choosing an electricity supplier to serve all of your municipal accounts. Due to some good decisions in the past, we've, we had a long-term supply agreement that we put in place back in 2001. And that extends out until November of 2025. That's a little over six cents a kilowatt hour, 6.08 cents a kilowatt hour for the majority of your municipal accounts. Now, this has turned into an extremely valuable contract. Our clients that were in the market, you know, as of last fall, were victim to close to 15 cents a kilowatt hour. And that's really, the market right now has changed so dramatically. This has become incredibly valuable to the city, and we expect it to continue that way through 2025. The market forces there are, have changed a little bit in that New Englanders are, in a way, subject to some of the challenges that are playing out in the European Union as that continent is seeking ways to eliminate their reliance on Russian pipeline natural gas. One of the ways they're doing that is buying liquefied natural gas cargoes from the United States. And with the price differential between what, you know, we are used to paying for natural gas domestically, which over the past five years, you know, has averaged somewhere around $4 a decatherm just for price relativity. You know, this past fall, the European continent was paying $30 to $40 per decatherm for that product. So imagine, you know, a market where you can sell your gas for 10 times the price that it's worth domestically. You know, that has put pressure on our domestic market. And we are shipping more and more liquid gas to Europe to meet that need. In New England, and that's a national issue. Specific to New England, we also rely on liquefied natural gas cargoes when temperatures drop, you know, below 15 degrees, because we lack the pipeline infrastructure to move natural gas into our marketplace, into New England. We don't have sufficient gas pipelines to meet all of our heating loads and power generation needs during the coldest months of the year. And one of the ways we solve that is through fuel switching. We generally see a switch in fuels used for electricity. That means going from natural gas, pipeline natural gas, to alternatives, being oil and cargoes of liquefied natural gas that are injected down in Boston and up in Canaport, New Brunswick. Those LNG cargoes provide relief to our domestic, or I should say, regional, gas infrastructure and provide a price cap on electricity during those coldest winter months. And the, with the demand for those liquefied gas cargoes going so high and the price getting so expensive, New Englanders end up having to pay that same price as they are in Europe. Because once a ship is loaded with that fuel, it's going to find the highest price market. So we really end up having to contend with European price points to meet our winter, winter power generation and to some extent, heating needs. So you're probably all familiar with what this looks like now on your heating bills. And if you haven't seen that yet, you'll probably see it on your next invoice. But that's kind of the situation we're in. We've seen a little bit of price relief here in the first part of 2023 with the mild weather. The market is clearly long on gas. When we have these longer mild-weather spells, prices have relaxed a little bit. But it's just a bit of a different environment than when we were talking about energy last. And with that, I'll pause. If there's anything else I can add, please let me know. And thanks, everyone, for your attention.
Any questions? Any questions from the public? All right. Thank you for the presentation. We have more discussion items? City manager's search report, search process.
Thanks, Mayor. So this is an opportunity for, excuse me, the city council, excuse me, to discuss how you would like to proceed for the city manager's search. I would suggest that perhaps I gather two or three proposals from consultants that can help you lead the process and then bring those back to the council. But I think the council should discuss how you would like to proceed.
I guess I'll jump in and say that I think that's a good idea. I think we need someone to lead the process. And having a couple of different proposals to consider is always a good idea. So, but I'd like to hear from others and see what you think.
It makes sense to get them proposals, Bill.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, they need to know who they're dealing with and who the consultants are. Counselor Frankie.
Do, do we need to do an RFP for this, or can we just do this informally?
I expect that the cost will be less than $10,000, so we can do this informally. I expect that the cost will be less than $10,000, so we can do this informally.
All right, well, and I think the, the last time where our procedure was a little more extended than it was, wasn't quite as efficient as it should have been. So that's what, I hope this time we can move with a little more speed.
I'm hoping that we can have this process wrapped up by the end of, of budget season, or at least September, so that we can release you from your position if you really want to go, and, and have someone come on board at a time that is, is good for the city in terms of, of the workflow.
I think laying, with a consultant laying out a, a good process, whoever we, the council decides to choose, I would like to think, you know, within six to eight months, we can have a selection made, if not somebody on board by hopefully September. So yes, I can go back to my role of assistant city manager and continue working in that rego, or role, hopefully.
Karen, go ahead. I know we tried this a second ago.
Hi, thank you. Karen Heck, Ward 6. I went to a fabulous presentation that the chamber had on Thursday about diversity, equity, and inclusion, and creating welcoming community. And I just hope that one of the qualifications that you add into the job requirements or what you hope they have would be experience with creating that kind of community. There are people from countries all over the world who are here. There are transgender people who are here. There are differently abled people. There are rich people, poor people. And it would be really nice to know that there was, one of the qualifications was having experience in creating a welcoming community. Thanks.
Council Frankie, your hand is still up. Did you have something else to say?
No, sorry.
Nope, no worries. I didn't want to miss it. Any other councils or members of the public? All right. Moving on to city manager's report.
Yes, you'll notice in your agenda packet, there is a report from the city manager, a written report. I'll leave that as it stands. I certainly will answer any questions about what that, any of those items that are in there. I don't have anything else to add at this point verbally, but you can expect to have a written report at every agenda packet. So you can see it ahead of time, and so that the public can see it as well with the agenda packets that are posted online.
It was nice getting it early this week. Anyone else? All right. Go ahead, Claude. Nope, sorry.
The Comprehensive Plan Committee met, or, yeah, met last week, and we're at the point where we've collected most of the data that was going to be, that is going to be included in the next Comprehensive Plan Report. And we're now at the point where the different subcommittees are going to start looking at their data sets and comparing them to what the last plan. And following that, we'll start working on developing the narrative for the next Comprehensive And you already got my report from the TIF Committee, so I think that's all I have.
Thank you, Claude. Council Green.
I, I actually just wanted to draw attention, everyone's attention, to one item in the, in the city manager's report regarding the second downtown visioning charrette, which will be held on February 2nd. This was just announced, so we're going to get the publicity out, but just wanted to let everyone know about that. And we'll have location and times for you soon, but February 2nd, save the date. Thanks.
Anyone else? All right. Moving on, oh, public comments section. Anybody online, Patty?
No hands raised.
Anybody from the public here have something to say on a topic that does not appear? Churchill.
Hello. Sorry, good evening. My name is Churchill Alangue. I'm a Waterville resident for eight years. I just started a coffee roastery. The grand opening is on Thursday at Holy Cannoli Downtown, so I'm inviting all of you. Come, let's celebrate coffee. Thank you.
And you don't have to wait till Thursday because it's already there and it's great. I don't know if anybody's had it. But it's good. All right. Anybody else in the public? Moving on to the consent agenda.
Can you move to adopt?
I'll move to adopt.
Second.
Second.
Okay. And I have an amendment as well.
Bring that first.
So this is under ordinance 202223.
On the minutes, right? You're amending the minutes, correct?
Sorry, yes. For, for January 3rd. So there's, this is regarding the, the rental registration housing ordinance, and it says in the minutes noted that there are no penalties for noncompliance. It should say noted that there are only penalties for noncompliance, or that there are, there are penalties for noncompliance, but no fees, is the point. So just wanted to make sure that that.
Is there a second to that? Shall we vote on the amendment?
Okay.
So we can vote on that amendment, and then we'll move the consent agenda as amended. Okay.
All right.
So.
So, yeah, the minutes read, Green wanted, added that we, we want to obtain the owner's name, building manager, and emergency contact information, but noted that there are no penalties for noncompliance. That is not correct. There are, there are penalties for noncompliance, but no fees. Right? So there are no fees in this ordinance. The only penalty is for noncompliance.
Okay. So can we vote on that amendment?
Yes, please.
Oh, we don't have, oh, we do have to roll call again. Council Gilli?
Yes.
Council DeBrito?
Yes.
Council Klepak? Council Klepak?
Muted.
I'm sorry.
Is that a yes? I'm sorry.
Hear me?
No.
We still haven't heard your yes.
No, we're not hearing you.
You, you can hear me?
Yes, now we can. Council Green?
Yes.
Council Morris?
Yes.
Council Frankie?
Yes.
Council McCormick?
Yes.
The vote is seven in favor and zero opposed, so we move it as amended. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Roll call, Patty.
Council Gilli?
Yes.
Council DeBrito?
Yes.
Council Klepak?
Can people hear me?
Yes, we can right now.
Is that a yes?
Yes, yes, yes. I'm like shouting it, yes.
Council Green?
Yes.
Council Morris?
Yes.
Council Frankie?
Yes.
Council McCormick?
Yes.
The vote is seven in favor and zero opposed.
All right. Moving on to old business. Ordinance 1992022.
Is there a motion to take all items by title only?
Motion.
Second.
May I do a roll call? Council Gilli?
Yes.
Council DeBrito?
Yes.
Council Klepak? Can you nod your head, Council? We're really not hearing you well.
I don't know how to improve that, but I've been saying yes.
Okay, thank you.
I believe there's a delay, so.
There's just a delay in your.
There's a delay in his response. I think that's what's wrong.
Thank you. Council Green?
Yes.
Council Morris?
Yes.
Council Frankie?
Yes.
Council McCormick?
Yes.
The vote is seven in favor and zero opposed. Ordinance 1992022, adopt a vacant and abandoned buildings ordinance. Move to adopt.
Second.
Okay, so this, this was carried over from last fall. Council Frankie, do you want to speak to this one?
Well, it, I'm still working on trying to put together some kind of procedure to deal with particularly the abandoned buildings. So I haven't been very busy in the past month. I haven't gotten to it. So I would suggest that we table this until I get a chance to do some of the work and consult with our, with the city's attorney.
Is there a second?
Is, is that a move to table indefinitely or to a certain date?
Well, I'm not, not exactly sure when I'll be able to get to it, so maybe indefinitely would be better.
Okay.
Patty, can you roll call?
Council Gilli?
Yes.
Council DeBrito?
Yes.
Council Klepak? Was that a yes, Council Klepak?
Yes.
Council Green?
Yes.
Council Morris?
Yes.
Council Frankie?
Yes.
Council McCormick?
Yes.
The vote is seven in favor and zero opposed.
Moving on to ordinance 222023.
Adopt a rental housing registration ordinance. Move to adopt.
From the public?
Okay. Well, I think, yeah, I mean.
I think it'd be helpful for the public to speak, so.
Yeah, let's have the public speak.
I think that'd be.
Dan, go ahead.
I'm Dan Anderson from Ward 5. I have what's called a mother-in-law apartment attached to our house. This apartment was key to our being able to afford a mortgage. And it also provides a nice little apartment for, it's small, but it provides a nice little apartment in a nice neighborhood for one or two people. And it gives them a unique situation where they know who the landlord is, who's coming and going from the house, and it also gives the landlord a, a comfortable situation too, where we can choose who our housemate is going to be. And I'd hate to see this ordinance do anything detrimental to that, because it, if you look at it with the inspections and everything, you know, my best comparison would be an unfunded mandate. So if our house is inspected and we find, we find a deficiency, that could cost a lot of money. We may or may not be able to afford it, and we could be looking at evicting someone because we can't do the repairs. And I think we aren't unique. There's at least three of the same situations on my street, and we're, there can't be more than 24 houses on my street. And one of them is occupied, or two of them are occupied and one of them isn't. And I'm not sure why, but it might be because the homeowner doesn't need the money and doesn't really want to bother with it. But I just had a son who moved home and back home because his roommate's moved out and he can't afford to live on his own. So we're looking around at the rents, and I'm really shocked at how much the rents are. I don't see how the market is functioning, but people must be renting them because it's hard to find a place. So I, and another concern I have is that Portland, I think this is the way Portland started out, but now they're actually controlling, telling landlords how much they can raise rent. And they can only raise rent so much a year. So to me, what that would say is, guess what? Every year, they're going to raise the rent that much because they're not going to lose out on that opportunity in the future. So I think it's a good idea to, I know, maybe have a registry and know where all the apartments are, and, you know, so you can contact owners, especially if there's a problem. But I, I think this owner-occupied housing is, is something that we can market. And, you know, for like my neighbor who's not renting his place, would, you know, get an idea that, you know, he's helping out the community to be able to rent a place. Another thing that we've done is we had a tenant who was there for 16 years, and he was grateful for us, and we were good for him. And I only run up on rent once for $30 in those 16 years. So that's a benefit that he had from us. So I, I kind of, I guess I would support an amendment as in the Maine Rural Rental Housing Guide, put out by the Maine State Housing. Owner-occupied units are exempt from the discrimination laws. And the reason for that is so you can choose your housemate. It has nothing to do with race or, you know, other minority, anti-discrimination. It's, you know, three people came to my house, and one was a drummer, planned to be in a band. I wouldn't pick him if he was going to be practicing drums, you know? And that's, that's just an example of what I give. So I thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Dan Burnier. I'm a resident of Ward 1, and I represent the Central Maine Apartment Owners Association. The issue we have in Waterville is not enough investment in housing and not enough housing. We need to encourage investment and not discourage investment. And, you know, one of the things that some people have talked about, the Lewiston ordinance. The Lewiston ordinance came about because Lewiston was the poster child for the state for lead poisoning. I participated in hearings at the state level on Lewiston's issues, and the state legislature basically told Lewiston, you need to deal with your lead paint problems, your lead poisoning problems. Waterville has not had those issues. The other thing that's interesting with Lewiston is I have contacts down there, as I've done some work for their association over the years. And I asked one of them about their registration ordinance. One of the landlords I worked with, he wasn't aware they had one. And then when I went around to some of the others, that apparently there's no real enforcement of their registration ordinance. They do have a portal on their website. So none of, they're just, they have this portal and that's it. There are some very real, I'm trying to be brief here because I know you're trying to limit people to three minutes, and I gave most of this in a letter, and I'm trying not to be redundant. The administrative costs that you put in on landlords will be passed on to tenants in terms of increased rents. This states you cannot rent if your, your registration is revoked. So if your registration is revoked, that means you've got to evict tenants. And I gave the simple example, if somebody's a little bit behind in their, their taxes, they can't get their registration. Well, what if you can't make improvements by your next registration? One of the bigger problems landlords in our community face right now is lining up contractors. We have a serious shortage of contractors. You're going to lose your registration, and therefore you will be required to evict. We need to be working towards encouraging investment in our community, not discouraging it. Now, a couple of things that I will point out that I think are particularly scary here. You talk about the inspections, which I think the owner occupied there. This says the building is subject to inspection, and if you don't agree to the inspection, what I call a warrantless search, and really legally it is, then you lose your registration. That's, first of all, I tend to think that's unconstitutional, but the, that's very scary because it's not just the tenant's unit. You'll be searching the owner occupied. What happens if you have one tenant that just complains and there's four different apartments in the building? Do the others also have their apartments going through? The annual safety checklist, you're going to have to every year go through your tenant's apartment, inspecting their apartment. Tenants, even the best tenants, don't like it when landlords come in unnecessarily. It's, this is their home. This is their privacy. Landlords, they generally inspect when people move in after they move out, and then if there's a significant reason while they're there, you inspect. Tenants are not going to be happy when landlords start inspecting their premises every year to comply with the safety checklist that's in here. And I happen to cite to the seconds if anybody's saying that's not in there. The definition of business operator, I won't get into it, but as a lawyer, it's so contrary to our legal system, and it looks like Waterville's heading towards piercing a corporate veil. The other thing is I don't understand why that's in there. I don't understand what that definition actually achieves in this bill. And there's an amendment being offered which is going to take out the residential information. One of- One of the scarier things in representing landlords is the bad tenants these days. There aren't many of them, but they get quite scary. I mean, some of the things I've seen for tenants, I mentioned my letter about a landlord that got slugged. That tenant also spray painted, "I warned you what would happen if you evicted me in the unit after they destroyed it." That's something that's happened in the last two weeks. I would encourage you not to pass this. We need to encourage investment in our city, not discourage investment in our city. And I've gone over many of, much of this also in my letter to you. One thing I would ask, actually, so not everybody, I know there are few people who want to speak, and with the mayor's indulgence, could we just have everybody who's here in opposition to this, this ordinance stand up so you can see who's? Thank you. I'm happy to take questions. I also wrote you a letter, so I don't want to go. I also have an interest in saving your time, so I won't repeat what I said in the letter.
I'm going to give you more than three minutes since you represent the entire, a big portion of the community. But I think Rebecca's got some questions or at least some answers.
I, I do. I, I just, I just want to clarify some of the points you made with, with our code enforcement officer. I think I saw him here. And because I think, I think there's some misconceptions that you, you know, that people have about this. This is not a yearly inspection. The personal residence of an apartment owner will not be inspected. And if that's the way it's written, then we need to change it. That's not the intention at all here. I'm not sure what the administrative costs are to this. The form is very short and simple, so it should not be a burden. The business operator definition, there was a point at which we had that in, in the ordinance and it was removed. So I think someone mentioned it still shows up in the definitions, and I don't think it needs to be there. We're requesting information on the legal owner, the property manager, and then an emergency contact for after hours. So there's no, there's no role here for the business operator. It's.
I don't understand why that's in, that definition makes no sense other than to cause trouble.
Where do you see it? Where do you see it in the ordinance?
The business operator, it is Section Two on page two, right in the middle of the ordinance.
Right. I mean, it's a definition that doesn't actually come to play in the ordinance anywhere, so.
So why is it in there?
Well, I think it can be removed. I think, like I said, it's from a previous version that got left in. Because as you know.
It's a legally very troubling definition.
Yeah, so let's take it out. I don't think anyone needs it to be there. I'll let Bill Lee chime in in case I've misspoken.
Bill, you still with us?
Yes, I am.
All right.
Bill, is there any reason why we need business operator in the definition section?
I don't really think that you do. This came from that Lewiston ordinance, which seemed to be heavy on definitions, on all of which really were applicable. So I don't think I have any problem with its removal.
Okay. I believe actually Waterville does have issues with lead paint. That's come up a number of times.
I have an abandoned unit across the street from me that is full of lead.
Actually, I've lived in an apartment that was full of lead myself.
Okay. Don't, don't say there's not a lead problem in this town. I have a property across the street from me. The guy either wants to get it rented again, or he wants to get it sold, and it's full of lead. So please do not say that here.
Okay. If I could clarify what I said there, because that is.
You can clarify, but don't say that there is not a lead problem in this town.
Any pre-1978 building probably has lead paint in it. That's the cutoff year. However, if you look at the Maine Department of Health and Human Services data, there has not been significant problems here in Waterville with children testing positive for lead poisoning. Lewiston has. That's a statistical fact you can look up on the Maine Department of Health and Human Services website. The legislature's held a lot of hearings. Lewiston is the trouble spot in our state for lead poisoning.
Right.
Now, Waterville, I'm not saying there are no cases in Waterville, but we are not a hotspot the way Lewiston is.
It did sound like you said it wasn't an issue in Waterville. And so I think.
Not lead paint. I live in a house that has lead paint.
The point, I think the point you're making was the, the registry was initiated in part to deal with that issue. But the reality is that this, the inspection program is, you know, can potentially identify some issues that do exist. And we actually have some funds now for, for brownfield assessment, which includes lead and asbestos. And, and that's available to property owners and, and with likely grant dollars to follow to actually abate it. So if there is a problem like this, surely we do want to find out about it and do something about it.
And again, you can look at the data on the Maine Health and Human Services website. If I could also adjust the annual safety inspection. Section Five requires before March One of each year, the legal owner, the business operator, or the property manager shall submit a registration application for each residential building. And Section Six Sub H says that includes a completed safety checklist. So are they supposed to complete the list without looking at the safety, without looking in the apartments each year?
Yeah, so I think I sent you a message, but I'll just repeat it. And that, that's an important point though, so thank you for bringing it up. Initially in this ordinance, we had a set safety checklist, which was literally, you know, check this box if this occur, if this is in place. And you're right, you would have to go through the, the building every year and see if it's applicable or not. And we listened to the landlords who, who came to our, our meetings, who said that was burdensome. And we said, okay, yeah, you're right, actually. So we took it out and we, yes.
It's in the draft in front of the committee.
Okay.
I, I've got the agenda draft right here.
So we need to change that then, because that's not the intent. The safety checklist is now simply a list of existing ordinances and requirements on the books with a place to sign and date that, that it's been read and, and, you know, understood. So it's simply acknowledging that you know what the requirements are, which I think is important, especially if we have new investors in housing who are, who are creating new units, and maybe they've never been a landlord before. They should be able to, you know, they should know what, what the legal requirements are. So it's not, it's, it's not a checklist in that sense. We can make that change so that it's clear.
Right now, the ordinance says a completed safety checklist. Now, whatever you're referencing, that's not part of the ordinance itself.
Well, it was included, the, the list itself, let's say this formerly the safety checklist, was included in the agenda packet. And it, I have a copy here. It's simply a summary of all the, you know, Maine State statutes and Waterville ordinances that a property owner who rents is expected to follow. And so it's just an acknowledgement that you've read and understood that. We can change the wording certainly to make sure that that doesn't indicate any kind of actual checklist.
What the form that they're going to have to fill out, who decides how to, what's contained in that further if it doesn't come back to the council? Is that something administrators can just change on their own to what this safety checklist will include?
Well, the safety checklist is simply this document, which is in the packet. It's just a signature of acknowledging that this list has been read. That's all it is. So I think the word "safety checklist" should be changed.
I would simply put the wording of the ordinance hasn't changed from what you were talking about earlier. So the, the ordinance would have to be changed. The other thing that I would suggest, the, the big thing here was you saying you needed contact information for landlords. You have the addresses. I do believe if you put up a voluntary portal, most landlords would put in their phone number. I don't know of a sane landlord out there that doesn't want the police and fire to have their phone number. I mean, and I would be very curious if you tried to put up a voluntary portal on a website where they could put in their emergency contact information. I know the association would encourage all of the landlords in town to participate in a voluntary portal, and I'd be curious, you know, what level we would just get without this large regulatory regime. One of the problems is, and I think the biggest thing that really probably scares people is this the beginning, and is more coming at them after this? Is rent control next? Is, you know, if we get this safety checklist, does somebody come back with a further safety checklist? Is this the tip of the iceberg, or is this the end of what's coming at them? A voluntary portal, like I said, you're not a, you're not a smart landlord if you don't want the police department to have your phone number so they can call you if there's a problem in your building. I mean, that's not a, a tough, I mean, and the S in a city our size, there'll be one or two who are lazy and just don't bother to sign up on the portal. But I think overwhelmingly landlords would log into a voluntary portal. We happen to have the, probably the best association in the state. We're actually probably the strongest department owners association in the state, much stronger than a lot of larger cities. And I know the association would push landlords to get involved in that.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I got a question. You stood up a minute ago because you were all opposed to this. Stand up if you're ready to move into any one of your units tonight. Okay, thank you. Because the last, hold on, hold on. The last time I asked this question, we were at the housing thing about a little more than a year ago, and only two people stood up. Every other landowner there at the time was sitting there shaking their head, no. Because the state put papers all over it.
I think, you know, obviously this group here is very committed to their, their properties and they're invested in Waterville. I mean, there are, there are many properties in the city who are, have been sold recently and are owned by out-of-state owners. Who knows how they're managing them? This is not about targeting particular individuals. And it's not about, it's not about, you know, punishing landlords in general, which, you know, seems to be the impression, but it, it is an effort to, yeah.
Please be respectful while they're speaking.
Yeah, I would appreciate that. Because the goal here is to make sure that there's safe housing in Waterville. All right? And, and this, frankly, I, I want to let other people speak, but I'm just going to say that this is the product of a dialogue with you over many months. We've listened, we've changed. We need to work together if we want to create adequate housing for the people in our city. And so we're asking for your, your help and support, and we are not moving to rent control.
Any other councillors?
I, I mean, I had a question. On Section Six, Six Point One, where it says inspection. So it says that once a year, they, they're going to inspect the building. But are they also going to inspect the rental units? Because as it reads here, it says that it will.
Is that the part we're removing?
Which section is that, Flavia?
That's on, under inspection, Six Point One.
So I'll just read what it says. All owners must allow onsite inspections of their building by the city, including, and so their building is the vague part. It's the rental units that are, are to be inspected, not the personal quarters of a person who owns their building. That would be illegal.
But that's not.
And failure to allow such inspections will result in revocation of the building's registration. That doesn't mean you cannot rent your property. It means you're unregistered. That's all.
The ordinance says you cannot rent if you're not registered. That's.
I don't, I don't believe so.
Yeah, it does. Yeah, I believe that's Section Four. Let me pull it up.
So that is just around the building? So that is just the building itself, not each individual?
Each individual unit, apparently.
Yeah. The Section Four says, "No person or entity shall operate any residential building without obtaining a residential registration from the city under the terms of this article." And that's the issue. If you lose your registration, you have, legally, that tells me you've got to evict your tenants. And if you look at Six Point One, it says inspect the building, not the rental units. Part of it, a lot of this is very poorly drafted. If, if some of the drafting had been done, I still don't like the general worried about the long-term direction it takes us, but a lot of this comes from very poorly, this is a very poorly worded ordinance. And you use, the owners must allow onsite inspections of their building. So that means if you have one tenant complain, all the tenants in the building could be subject to inspections in their units. If you have an owner occupied, your, your owner occupied is in the building, so they can inspect your unit too. Now, the truth is, code enforcement actually in Waterville has a pretty good relationship with most landlords. So are people worried about current code enforcement? No. Do we know who's going to be holding that job 20 years from now? No. So it's, and we're actually kind of fortunate. We're a city, you know, I'm probably about proud of a Waterville resident as there is. You know, I come from two generations of mayors of Waterville. But it's, we have very good relations here in this city, but we can't always count on the people in the future being reasonable with this. And we're fortunate, I think, one of the things that we need, we're losing here is this has become very adversarial. We won't get into why, where we're a community, where usually apartment owners and code enforcement, housing, and all the groups work together in a cordial manner. And that's been lost through this whole process, and that is extremely unfortunate.
Dan, I got a question. So what's the reason why you think we're lost in the process? Like, where did we lose ourselves in that? Because I, like, from my understanding, it's been over, over a year since we're trying to get, like, trying to get together the landlords and the tenants together, so can you explain that?
Well, and I think it's really, you know, to be honest, I think it stems from this particular regulation, this ordinance. This is, there are many things that we need to deal with our city attracting investment. I think to talk about lead poisoning, we have, have the, the apartment owners association here in Waterville is probably the best about running educational programming on lead paint of any association in the state. And they run lots of educational programming. They've always had good relationships with the fire department and with code enforcement here. Yes, you've got a few bad landlords. Guess what? They're not going to bother to register. They're not going to bother to fill out your safety checklist. And if the experience is what Lewiston had, nothing's going to be done to them after they don't comply. It's going to be the good landlords who've been getting along who comply. So I tend to think it's this ordinance where the landlord just see it coming at them and saying, what is this doing? What is this actually achieving? You want contact information, the good landlords will probably all give it to you voluntarily, and the bad landlords are going to ignore you even if you make it past this, this ordinance. And so I actually think of this, this particular ordinance, the sad part of it is it's done more to damage what have been traditionally very positive relationships for a very long time. And it's, you know, and to be honest, I, you know, I've been maintaining myself as a long-term Waterville resident. Kind of bothers me because just, this is not the way things have usually been done in the city, where things get very contentious.
Counselor Frankie.
I just want to make a couple of comments, Mr. Bernier. You've complained seriously about the language of the ordinance, yet you have offered no alternative. It seems to me that a good lawyer would come up with an alternative instead of just being negative. In terms of being contentious, you have been nothing but contentious since you started meeting with the housing committee. And in fact, that's one of the things that people don't like about lawyers is their tendency to argue. Look, I know what I'm talking about. I am a lawyer, and I'm engaging in contentious argument with you now. So I think it's time to move ahead, and I'm in favor of this ordinance.
Sorry, you feel that way? You know, I would point out that I offered the voluntary registration, that the voluntary portal, and that I believe most landlords would comply with that. We try that. I'm sorry you feel I've been contentious from the beginning. Many people have read the letters I've written, and that's not the reaction I've gotten from others, but your title's your opinion on that. I have been a little bit contentious tonight. I would agree with that. The, but there's an alternative. But the other thing is in order to also an alternative, what does this regulation achieve? Tell me what you want to achieve, and I'll come up with the alternative for you.
Any other councillor?
Well, I think what it achieves is a more effective code department. It's something that the code department has, has said would really help with doing their job. It's providing, it's, it's going to take about five, five or 10 minutes. It's going to take about five or 10 minutes of time to complete. It's information that you say you want to give voluntarily anyway. I understand that there are concerns about the level of inspection and the potential cost to remediating that. We're also looking at ways to help spur investment because it is important. We're about to vote on a TIF for a new housing development. Waterville is not discouraging investment in housing. But I'm wondering, I hate to put you on the spot, but I mean, I'd like to hear from our code officer as to what this will achieve for the department and alleviate some of the concerns that this is going to result in.
So...
You got to turn your mic on, Dan.
Flip it up.
Can you hear me?
Flip it up.
It's on. All right. You hear me now? Yep. All right. So, I'm Dan Bradstreet. I'm the Director of the Code Enforcement Office for the city. And the way that I read this ordinance is that it would affect rental properties, not owner occupied, for one. It's not... That's not a rental. An owner occupied unit is not a rental. And it says in the ordinance that it only affects properties where there's a lease or other form of rental agreement. So, if you have a family member in a unit next door, there's no lease agreement, rental agreement, what have you, this would not apply. I understand there's a big turnout here, and people are concerned. But there's over 1,000 rental properties in Waterville. That's a lot. And even with all these people here, it's a relatively small fraction of the whole that we're looking at. So, the things that we see when we go into some of these buildings, it's not about bad landlords, it's about landlords that just don't know. They don't know they have safety issues in their buildings. We see some pretty bad things sometimes with egress, emergency exits, alarm systems that don't work, smoke detectors that don't exist. I understand tenants remove them. We see that. But the intention of this is to just bring things up to the standard that they're supposed to be at already. It's not supposed to be a punitive thing. Any questions?
I'd just say, section three of this bill says the provisions of this ordinance apply to all residential rental buildings except the following: college dormitories, boarding and lodging houses, hotels, motels, beds and breakfasts, hospitals, convalescent centers, rest homes, nursing homes, residential care facilities, and then go on. But there is no exception for owner occupied if you're renting one of the units. Lewiston did exempt buildings with two or fewer units, but when Waterville drafted it, Waterville pulled that exemption out of its ordinance. So, Lewiston did provide an exemption for those smaller ordinances. And I think any reasonable interpretation that Waterville copied much of the Lewiston ordinance but pulled that out is that they intended to drag all those in. One of the things I'd also point and drag in here is, let's say a Colby professor has a single-family home and goes on sabbatical and rents that home. They're under this ordinance, and they have to register because you pulled out the exception that Lewiston had in their ordinance. So, I strenuously disagree with you, and I would encourage you to read section three.
Yeah, I partially agree with that. But by definition, an owner occupied unit is not a rental unit. It's an owner's personal place.
You're renting one of the units in the building. And then the inspections apply to the whole building.
So, in that situation, I would inspect the rental unit, not the owner's place.
But that's... And this is where I said...
Yes, I was.
Right now, I think every landlord in this room probably trusts you because they've got a pretty good relationship with you. But the ordinance says the building, and we don't know who's going to replace you someday. So, do I... I think if we ask everybody to stand up here and say, "Do they think you would be reasonable in that situation?", yeah, I don't think you have a problem with getting a vote of confidence. But who holds your job 20 years from now?
That's an easy adjustment to make. I think that's reasonable. I mean, that's not the intention of this thing. In my talks with the committee, that's not what the intent has been.
We've gone back and forth a lot. It hasn't been that contentious, so I appreciate it. But...
I have another question.
Give me a moment, and I'll let you up. I've been looking at this stuff. We've had meetings. I've had meetings with some of you over the past year. The two units or less, I actually asked for it to not be that way. I wanted to see that anything under three units, I figured that if you had a duplex or your mom and pop, that you should just be avoiding all of this sort of red tape that was stripped out. I've brought up the searching of basements. I mean, if you... If a tenant complains and you look in their unit, great. But that tenant doesn't have the right to tell you to look throughout the rest of the building. They don't rent the rest of the building, they rent that one unit. I understand part of it, and you've alluded to this, phone numbers. Yeah, I can look up everyone's name to see who owns the property. But how do I get ahold of you when something's actually going wrong? And I think that's really what the goal of this is trying to get, is that information. I don't agree with sections of this. It will affect me. I know it will. The college ab unit is a three-unit, and it's not owner occupied. I think that some of that language should be put back in. I think that we shouldn't penalize people who are just, they've got a duplex and they've got somebody next door. I don't think we should be inspecting those properties. But we need your phone numbers. Things go on. If you have issues with your tenants, I... Don't you want my police officers to call you in the middle of the night and tell you something's going on? I mean, you want that in... Without your phone numbers, I can't do that. And as a person who owns properties and rents them, I get your... I get what's going on. I understand the discomfort of allowing people to just come into your homes or your properties and inspect them. But on the opposite side of that, there are some homes that really need to be inspected. I mean, how many do you drive by and you're like, "Why is that even standing?"" So, we have to find some sort of compromise that allows us to gather some of that information. This stuff here is a checklist. I would have signed off on that without walking into an apartment. I know where my smoke detectors are. I know that I have a fire suppressant system under the kitchen sink, so if there's a fire on the stove... Those are the things that are being asked for. Do you have the right egresses on your property? It's something we should know, is the window big enough on the first floor to get out? But there is a solution here that doesn't require us to fight with each other or to be contentious, as long as we're honestly trying to... As long as we're honestly trying to get to the goal together, honestly. But that's all I got.
You know, throughout this entire discussion, there's been a lot of talk about removing language and possible adding language to this ordinance. You know, we again have to work together. I mean, it's standing room only in here tonight. So, obviously, we have to work together and come to some type of, as the mayor said, a compromise in order to make this work. Do you... I mean, to my fellow councillors, do we feel that we should table this until the ordinance has appropriate language in it, and we could, you know, disseminate it and go from there in order to see if we can't come to that compromise?
I'm going to give a... Go ahead, ma'am. Yep, give me one second, sir. Go ahead, ma'am. You'll have to go up to the podium. Thanks, Dan.
I feel like the oddball out. I'm Winona Carnes, Ward Two. I think I'm one of the few tenants here tonight that have been renting. You're a tenant? So, we're very outnumbered as tenants tonight. Good. We're still outnumbered. Yes, we are. I am not a landowner. I've been renting the same house for 12 and a half years. Same landlord, been in the same place. I take issue with the fact that this ordinance rips tenants of their privacy over a phone number. My landlord, I want to tell you, he has never done an inspection on my house, ever. He's come to fix things. I can call him. I know his name. I know his phone number. And if the police showed up, I could give it to him. Easy. But to say that landlord occupied... Oh, I'm so mad, I'm shaking. Landlord occupied apartments or residences would be exempt. It places tenants in a whole nother category. I get the point of what you need, but what about our privacy? Owner... Landlord occupied tenant residents are exempt. I am a tenant of 12 years. I know my landlord's phone number. If something breaks, he shows up and fixes it. I cannot even wrap my head around every year having somebody inspect. And I rent a house. I don't have an apartment. I'm in a house. Why is this ordinance making people who rent second-class to landlords? There are shitty tenants. There are shitty landlords. I'm not going to argue that. But we are not second-rate. We deserve privacy. An annual inspection because you want a landlord's phone number? You guys, get a piece of paper. Can we write phone numbers down? That is not fair to tenants at all. 12 and a half years, in the same house, and now you want me to accept that every year somebody's going to come in to make sure that I have smoke detectors?
It's not every year. I just have to repeat that again? It won't be, but...
I don't care if it's every three years.
Okay. I just...
And it really is discouraging with the housing situation as it is, at this time, to be placing any more restrictions on landlords who are trying to rent unhoused people. Why? Open up a portal. Get a pad of paper and a pen at this point. Your... This ordinance is not going to keep bad landlords from having bad apartments. It's not going to do it. It's not.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Go ahead, sir. And then, ma'am. Absolutely.
And just speaking out of that, like, I really appreciate her speaking out of the landlord, because I mean, I rent, and that's the first thing I looked on that. I'm like, "Come into my apartment." I rent the house, too, and I'm like, "I don't think I want the money to come to my house." So, I really appreciate you speaking on that and the renters. Thank you.
Go ahead, sir.
My name's Jeff Seer. I have rented a couple of rental properties in Waterville. I've been a landlord for 22 years. So, I've seen a lot of the stress, the hardship that I participated in, a lot of the hardship. A lot of you people don't know what it's like to have rentals. And I can tell you, it's a pretty darn difficult job. As the code enforcer said, this is a small percentage of the amount of people affected by whether this is written wrong or whatever. I can tell you, it's another hardship for landlords. When I started, it wasn't long, and we had to deal with asbestos. That was a big deal. It was necessary. Don't get me wrong. But it doesn't mean it wasn't a hardship for us. Lead paint came along a couple of years later. Very big hardships for us. When we say hardship, we're talking, we're trying to swim like other businesses, trying to survive. This is always more expensive, and it's a chain reaction. Anyone involved with the asbestos, the lead paint, and then came radon. I spent thousands of dollars on radon systems, okay? It feels like you... Like Mr. Bernier said, you want to encourage businesses to function in Waterville and help your town and pay taxes. When a business starts out, you want to throw them a life jacket. You want to help them out. This gentleman right here, I have a really good suggestion for one improvement. Stop throwing 50-pound weights at us while we're trying to swim. That's a good one. That's one of the problems that we've been dealing with. We're constantly having to fight back and survive. And it's difficult. I'll tell you that right now. Along with the asbestos and lead paint, and perfect reason for insurance is to start saying, "Wow, this is more risk for me. I'm sorry, but your rates have to go up." That's just one area. It's a chain reaction, like I said. Our rents have to go up. What is that doing for the people that need, you know, affordable housing? I'll give you a good example of a hardship. One of my tenants left. I didn't realize, because I was fairly new, they hadn't paid the water bill when they left, until I got a threat of a lien on my property from the City of Waterville or from the Water District. A lien on my property? I told them, I said, "They bought a house in Waterville. Why aren't you going after them? The bill was in their name. But you put a lien on my property?" I wrote a letter that went to every board member. Not one of them had the courage to respond to me. You want to talk about hardship? That's frustrating. Court costs. Any of you have any idea what it's like to go to court? How much it costs? The effort involved? It's tough. Last time I went, $150 probably. Anyone else today? $200, $250, just to pay and do it yourself. God help you if you ask the clerk what a portion of the form means. What do you have to do? And they'll say, "Well, we're sorry. You have to hire an attorney. We can't give you legal advice." You know how helpless that is when you're green and you're just trying to swim? Attorney's fees, $500, $1,000 back then? I couldn't tell you what it is today for us to hire an attorney. You want to know what it's like to be insulted? Go to court and have Pine Tree Legal have somebody sitting there waiting to represent the tenant that just tore your apartment apart for free. But we have to pay. Okay?
Sir, I'm going to have to get her... You've got three minutes. Sorry.
Sure, sure. I could use three hours, and I could go on and on.
I get that.
Can I wrap up?
Yes, sir.
Well, I'm trying to pick a... One quick example, being in court, and I finally won a case. And I asked the judge, I said, "Your Honor, how do I get him to pay?" This is after losing many cases, which I shouldn't have lost. He's, "Well, I'm awful sorry, but I don't have a magic wand. I can't make him pay." What a beautiful thing when he's sitting right there. I can tell you, I never got a dime. That's so frustrating. And we do it over and over and over. But I just want to point out how we benefit the community. We hire carpenters, electricians, plumbers, roofers, cleaning people. For most of us, Home Depot and Lowe's are our second home. Painters, lawyers, yard maintenance, snowplows. How many other businesses contribute to your local economy that way? Right? We do a lot to help out. It would be nice to be thrown a life jacket, pardon me, instead of 50-pound weights. So, that's my point, is we're tired of always fighting to survive as a business. That's what you're doing. So, if you can rewrite it, if you can go after the landlords that need it, please do. Most of us would agree. Get the slum lords out. Give the tenants a fair shake. But give us a break, please.
Thank you, sir. Ma'am.
Thank you.
My name is Susan Wark, and I am a resident of Ward Four. I'm a landlord. I'm a member of the Central Main Apartment Owners and a previous board member. And I have a question for the council. Since you are bringing up the topic of possibly tabling this, and since there are sections that are written one way, and then we're seeming to get different interpretations from members of the council and from code enforcement, would it be possible to have some type of a committee, almost a blue-ribbon type thing, where there could possibly be Dan Bernier, maybe a board member from the Central Main Apartment Owners, and whoever would be appropriate from the council, to really go over how these sections that are being interpreted differently could possibly be rewritten? And to discuss if the duplexes should be included, if the owner occupied should be included? So, I don't know if that's a possibility, but I would like to suggest that as a possibility.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes.
Go ahead, sir.
Hi, everyone. So, I just wanted to reiterate the tenant situation as well. I am a tenant. I rent an in-law apartment from family, friends of mine. I do pay them rent, so I guess that constitutes me being a renter, even though I don't have a lease. And I help them with snow cleanup and all these other things. But I will also say that I'm concerned reading this ordinance, not only about privacy rights, but if someone goes in and inspects our... but if someone goes in and inspects our home, because it's a house that we happen to share on two sides, and finds something, maybe there's mold in the basement that's not impacting me in any way. What does that mean for my tenancy? Am I going to have to be evicted for them to abate that? Will they be able to afford to? How is that going to affect me? So I think we really have to think about this comprehensively. I think the Housing Committee is trying to make sure we have really quality housing in Waterville. We don't want to end up in a situation where people are unhoused as an impact of that. I do think that this needs to be tabled, more discussion. I would strongly suggest that anything like the Lewiston ordinance, less than three units, would be exempt. But my concern about the tabling thing is throughout this whole process, we've had the vacant property ordinance be tabled. We had this be, this was tabled. Last week, you took a first vote on this. There hadn't been any information in the paper about it. I actually feel like I'm very well-informed about what goes on in the city since I'm on the planning board and did not know that the vacant property ordinance was back up today until I looked at the ordinance right before I came, or looked at the agenda right before I came, rearranged my schedule because I was at a meeting to make sure I got here and knew what was going on. My concern about tabling it, or tabling it indefinitely or whatever, is that all of these people showed up today to talk about this. I've heard some of them speak at Housing Committee meetings. I've heard some of them speak at other city council meetings. And I'm afraid that we're going to table it, and then it'll show back up on an agenda, and it might not be announced in the paper. And we're all very, very busy, running in different directions, and we might not know. And I heard last week, well, no one's here to speak against it, so we might as well pass it. And you took a first vote. And then all of these people showed up too. And I don't think they're trying to be contentious. I think they're trying to inform you, right, about a different situation, a different side of this situation that we haven't thought of. We had another tenant speak to inform you of her situation, right? I've lived in my apartment for five years. I will probably live there until I buy a house, if I don't buy this house. Who knows, right? So we have a very good relationship. So Claude's asked for some suggestions and, you know, some thoughts that I might have if you are needing to pass an ordinance like this. You don't want it to be voluntary. We've said the goal is for it to be informative. So why do we need to have fines associated with it, right? Why can't, if there's an inspection, you find lead paint, it be like, hey, we found this? Let's work with you to fix it, right, so that your apartment's safe? Because I don't think anybody wants their tenants living in an unsafe place. I don't think people, no one's advocating for having unsafe housing in Waterville, right? But what are the costs associated with that? So I think that's one option, right? Another option is, why can't the tenants certify their own apartment? I have a lot of concerns about, you know, having code enforcement show up at my apartment unannounced or with 24-hour notice or whatever it may be. When I've lived there for five years, I have no concerns about my apartments. I feel safe. I feel like everything's up to code. Why can't I just sign off for my landlord and say, yep, I checked? You know, my smoke detector has batteries. I have an egress. Like, why can't I opt out of that process? You know, give me some property rights as well. But I do, I do have a lot of concerns with the ordinance, the way that it's written, the way that I've read it in the agenda packet, that it really impacts people's personal property rights, both tenants and landlords. I'm concerned about asking people how much they charge for rent. You don't ask any other business what their profits are. So I have a lot of concerns about just the privacy issues associated with this ordinance as well. So I hope that you keep those in mind. And I hope that when it does come back, there is some sort of notice so that people do know to show up and have an opportunity to hear the amended ordinance and speak to how, if they agree or disagree, or can add some input to that. So, thank you.
Hi. My name's Tori Stark. I have a rental property over on Silver Street.
I'm sorry, could you speak, move the mic up a little more so we can hear you better? Thank you.
I've been a rental landlord since 2018. I can say, if you're having me sign a document saying that my apartments are safe, I'm going to check them every year, every time I have to sign that. That document assigns liability to me, and I'm going to check it. Because tenants do take the batteries out of their firearms. It's just a thing. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir.
I'll be in the three minutes.
Appreciate that.
All right. Hello, council members. My name is Stephen Casey. I live in Benton. I'm the president of the Central Main Apartment Owners Association, represent almost 700 landlords. I've not spoken to a single member that supports this ordinance. In fact, the vast majority of our members are strongly against this ordinance. There are many points to argue against it, but I'm just going to just go over a few things here real quick. This ordinance is redundant. It's been clearly proven that the city has or can't obtain all the apartment building data that they need. This is done through the city taxes and other sources that are available. Also, the time for paperwork and inspection will be a major burden on our landlords. Small landlords may have to take a day off from work. Larger landlords may have to put a significant amount of time and energy into labor costs. Warranty inspections are unconstitutional, and the Supreme Court has already determined this. Plus, many of the tenants have spoken, many tenants don't want inspections in their homes. This ordinance will slow investment in Waterville, especially with small investors that may want to buy a two or three-family unit, just go to next town over. It may increase housing shortage and cause rental rates and homelessness to rise. You're speaking about, you don't want safety in these apartments up to code. And I did approach Dan recently. We do, you know, our association does education events frequently, and I approached Dan about it recently, and he wasn't currently available, but hopefully we can get together in the future and promote that and have some education sessions. We usually do them above the fire station in Waterville. But anyway, I urge you not to pass this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jamie Pelkey. I'm from Ward Seven. I agree with Tom over there, the house that he has across the street. The child was 10 times the legal limit of lead in his body. I was there. I read the papers. The town, not the town, the doctor told her, you have two hours to get this baby out or we're going to have somebody come and take him. As a tenant, I'm also a tenant and actually starting to manage my apartment building. I agree that some of these things need to be done. Everything needs to be done. You're welcome. Come to my apartment, inspect it. Thank you.
And one thing too, I have to say, it's because I rent as well, and it's not about like not having somebody come and inspect my apartment because I did have the insurance company come and inspect my apartment. My thing is, it's being done every year. So that's like my only thing. But I don't mind because also to me being like a mom with kids. So a lot of things may go wrong with my apartment that I may not know about. And I think it's about safety and quality too. So if I don't know what's going on in my apartment, and like this year, I had the insurance coming in and do an inspection, and I was mind-blown of so many things I had to fix. I mean, me and the landlord put together that he had to go ahead and fix. So I think it's more about safety than anything. That's how I'm looking at it. It's more about safety and quality.
Thank you. I just want to reiterate, as Council Green has said, it is not an annual inspection. I know that we, I think part of the biggest issue that we all have, whether it be the landlords, tenants, or us as a city, is there's a lot of misinformation out there that we're constantly tripping over. And I think that stems from having something that isn't perfectly complete. But go ahead, ma'am. I don't want to stop you from... I don't think this is going anywhere today. I think if you guys try to vote on it, it's not going anywhere. So I think it behooves you to sort of either figure out whether or not you want to vote on this right now, as Claude wants to do, or the suggestion over there to table it. But we're just going to go round and round all night with everybody getting up and speaking, and we're not going to accomplish anything for this tonight.
And I agree with that too. And I do believe that we've been sitting here for like almost an hour, and I have talked about this. And last meeting, we didn't have nobody, and it was on the agenda, last agenda as well. So I suggest we table it, and I mean...
Let's give the lady the chance to speak. Yep, absolutely.
Yeah, obviously.
Well, my name is Tanya Hazard. I actually own an apartment building here in town. I also owned one in Orno. And I don't know if you guys know, but Orno has an ordinance also. Theirs was a $25 fee, and you had to register the house every year, but you didn't have to do an inspection. I think that's the biggest thing that people have, is they don't want you in their house. We had to draw a drawing of the building, where it was located with the land, where your parking lot was, things like that. Because their issue was kids out of control up in Orno. So it was a $25 fee, or it was a fee per house, and I only owned one house up there. It started out that way, and then they kept adding more things to it, more things to it. And then finally, this last year, you had to live within an hour of the building, or you had to have a property manager. I lived 40 minutes away, so I could still make it there. But I was just like, you know what? This is just one more ordinance. They're just going to keep doing this. I'm done. I sold the building because I was just like, done. Second thing, I've owned my building here in Waterville for about 20 years, and I've had the fire inspector come and inspect it like twice. So I mean, it's, you guys have people who do inspections, so I'm not quite sure why you need to add another one to that. And I have some Section 8 housing, so I have the Section 8 housing people do two of my units every year. So it's like, you know, there are inspections. The fire inspection, I'd never, never heard of before because Orno doesn't have any of those inspections that I know of. So I just don't know why you're adding more to it.
The code officer inspects for different things. That's why.
Well, your point is to have a safe building, right? And fire safety is one of the biggest issues.
It is, but it's not the only one. And, you know, Dan, you can clarify.
Yeah, I'll comment on that. So the ordinance doesn't include an inspection schedule. You're not going to get inspected every year. You're not going to necessarily, I mean, we do plan on going through all the buildings, but it's probably going to take five years to do that realistically. You mentioned the fire department inspections. Code enforcement actually accompanies the fire department on those inspections now. That's a recent thing that just started in 2022. So you won't, we won't be doubling the inspections. We'll be performing those inspections with the fire department and looking for various things at the same time.
And I guess the question is, what happens if a tenant absolutely refuses or isn't home when you do an inspection? Because they have jobs too, so they're not always going to have somebody there.
Yeah, we would reschedule.
You would reschedule with that one tenant in the building?
Yeah.
So that was just, those are my comments. That was my concern. So, thank you.
Go ahead. And then we're going to move on.
Is Waterville Housing Committee an ad hoc committee or permanent? So who would evolve this and monitor it over the years?
Well, that particular committee is sunsetting December 23.
Then would it be, who would monitor it?
Dan would. Code enforcement.
Okay.
Bill Lee.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
We can.
Sure. Just today, I received a statement of some concerns regarding the ordinance. And a couple of them I thought were worth taking a closer look at. I'm obviously, since I just got it today, have not had that opportunity. So my recommendation is, before you vote on this, that I have the opportunity to review and comment on concerns that were raised to me just today. They may have been raised to other people at some other time, but I just received it today.
Thank you, Bill. You know, two hours ago, it would have been nice.
Do I add a motion for anything?
He had his hand up.
I didn't see it.
Do we have a...
Do we have a motion on the table, on the floor?
Thank you for the motion to the table.
Yes.
And I'll second.
So I get a motion to table.
I motion to table till the first meeting in March, which would be March 7. And that gives them better than a month to work on some of this stuff, clarify it. And everybody in the room just heard, March 7, we can bring it back up. So you can all be back, and we can go back over. I'm even giving you a date.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second that. I think it's important.
There we go. Patty, can I get a roll call?
Council Gilly?
Yes.
Council DeBrito?
Yes.
Council Klepak?
Yes.
Council Green?
Yep.
Council Morris?
Yes.
Council Frankie?
Yes.
Council McCormick?
Yes.
Vote is seven in favor and zero opposed.
All right. Moving on to new business, Order 242023.
Order approving tax increment financing district manor gardens and related development plan.
Don't leave because we're about to invest in Waterville housing. Can we wait one moment for...
Yes, let them clear. All right, moving on to new business, Order 242023.
Order approving tax increment financing district manor gardens and related development plan.
To adopt.
Any discussion? This is the TIF.
Yeah.
Well, I hope you get it. Council Frankie?
Yeah. Just very quickly, the only real concern is, and I think this is a matter of it being a first time around for the Trammels to seek a TIF, was that coming in as an economic TIF rather than a housing TIF. But in light of the fact that it were taken care of a really blighted part of town, I think we should go ahead and approve this TIF.
Anyone else?
I just want to say that I think this is a great example of how Waterville does want to invest in housing projects and is willing to work with private partners to make that happen. And I think it's a great project, and I'm proud to support it, and I hope we'll have more of these.
I agree. As someone who used to work at John Martin's Manor back in high school, it's great to see wonderful housing in that property, you know, that land being put to good use.
Anyone else? Patty, can I get a roll call?
Council Gilly?
Yes.
Council DeBrito?
Yes.
Council Klepak?
Yes.
Council Green?
Yes.
Council Morris?
Yes.
Council Frankie?
Yes.
Council McCormick?
Yes.
The vote is seven in favor and zero opposed.
All right. Moving on to Resolution 252023.
Authorize the city manager to execute a medical billing contract with Quick Med Claims LLC.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion? Chief, you want to give us some details? Chief, you want to give us some details?
Real briefly, I don't want to take everybody's time this evening, but as you all know, we're running two ambulances 24 hours a day, seven days a week now. As a part, when that ambulance delivers a service or responds to somebody's house, it's accompanied by a medical bill. We do not have the in-house expertise to handle medical billing, therefore, we contracted with medical reimbursement services out of Wyndham to provide medical billing. We have since, because July 1 added two ambulances, our gross billing is about $300,000 per month, and our net revenue is 100 to 150,000 per month. So because of that significant increase in revenue coming through the door, it caused our medical billing rates to obviously increase. As a result of that increase, we took a look at our purchasing ordinance and put out to bid a new billing contract. There were seven at the time that came in. We formed a committee made up of two counselors, which I very much appreciate, and we reviewed the documents. I said two counselors, I also meant the finance director and the city, city manager, don't want to leave them out. We narrowed it down to three. I've submitted a information in the packet as to how we came to that conclusion, some of the pros and some of the cons, and we believe that Quick Medical Claims will offer the city the best service at this time. Some of the services that they included was interpreter services. We do have a lot of bilingual people here in the city, a patient portal, data reporting, a user interface that's much easier for the fire department and finance department, and a lot of other services that we currently don't have. So it would be my recommendation to the city manager and to the council to execute this billing contract. Our rate will go from 8% of net collected revenue to 4.5%. So that's a significant cost savings.
How, how much is, how much is this going to cost? How much they bid, how much are they charging?
They're charging 4.5% on net collected revenue. And we're currently, we're currently on track to do about 1.4 million in, in revenue this year. So that will be, going forward, 4.5% on net collected revenue.
Which would be nice, because we are saving 3.5%. And did they not say that they had a higher collection rate?
Repeat your question, Mayor.
The, the new company, do they not have a, a better collection rate percentage?
They are advising us they have a better collection rate. They have 124 employees versus, I believe it was 20 with our current contract. They submit 1.3 million claims per year, whereas our current contractor does about 46,000 here in the state. So through demonstrated experience and efficiency, they are projecting an increase in revenue. Yes.
Thank you.
Anyone else have questions?
Counsel Frankie.
It's just to augment what the chief said, we're going from a, a small company that operates just here in Maine to a nationwide company that I think really indicates that they know what they're doing and is giving us a, a very good, very good price. I recommend that we approve this.
All right. Anyone else? Patty, can I get a roll call?
Counsel Gilly?
Yes.
Counsel DeBrito? Counsel Klepak?
Yes.
Counsel Green?
Yes.
Counsel Morris?
Yes.
Counsel Frankie?
Yes.
Counsel McCormick?
Yes.
The vote is seven in favor and zero opposed.
Moving on to Resolution 252023. No, it's not. 26, 2023.
Authorize the city manager to accept a bid for painting of city streets.
Move to adopt.
Second. Any discussion? Bill, what's it going to cost us?
I was just checking to see if the public works director was online.
He is.
Can we bring him in, please?
Matt Skane, we're going to promote you.
Congratulations on the promotion, Matt, but it doesn't come with more pack.
Title promotion.
Matt, can you hear us? You're on mute, sir.
There we go.
Okay, can folks hear me?
Yes.
Yep. Okay, great. Yep, so the cost, I'm not sure who asked, but the cost would be $43,750. And just alone in materials, what we budget annually for painting, so that would be the reflective beads and the paint itself, and maintenance on the equipment is $32,000. So it's roughly $11,000 more than what's budgeted. I think it's a great move in direction for the, for the department and for the city to move into subcontract, subcontracting the painting program.
Thank you, Matt. Any questions?
Yeah, I just want to add that while we're spending a little bit more money than what our materials actually will cost, we are basically be able to re-sign, reassign those staff members to other maintenance projects within the city. So they'll be more efficient that way. And for those of you that know, it usually takes us all summer long to paint the roads. This will be done very quickly by the, by the subcontractor, so it won't take into the fall in order to paint all the roads when they start wearing off.
Is there a list of roads that are being painted?
All of them.
Done deal.
But you want sidewalks as well? I mean sidewalks. You know, when you crosswalk, like.
The crosswalks, yes.
Yep, it includes crosswalks as well. Yep.
Flavia wants arrows on the sidewalk. Counsel Frankie.
Finally.
Yes, Matt, will the painting by the subcontractor still be done in the wee hours of the morning? We had a couple complaints last year about that.
Yep, it's likely to be done during some of that time as well, in order for them to get it done in time and to avoid the heavy traffic hours.
All right. I hope that gets included in the newspaper story, so that people know that it's coming.
Right, that's a good idea. Thank you.
Amy, the painting is coming in the wee hours of the morning. Anyone else? Any other discussion? Patty, can I get a roll call?
Counsel Gilly?
Yes.
Counsel DeBrito?
Yes.
Counsel Klepak?
Yes.
Counsel Green?
Yes.
Counsel Morris?
Yes.
Counsel Frankie?
Yes.
Counsel McCormick?
Yes.
The vote is seven in favor and zero opposed.
Moving on to Resolution 272023.
Authorize waiver of foreclosure of municipal tax liens.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Some history, some info.
The reason why we ask for this is because if we take over a mobile home that is in a park, where you could potentially have to pay rent to the, the mobile homes, we probably wouldn't be able to move them out. A lot of times, they're, they're just not able to be moved and so forth. This does not forgive the taxes. The taxes are still sitting there, it's just that we're not foreclosing and owning that afterwards.
And it's not that much on some of these units, correct?
No, and, and a lot of them over the years have, the homestead exemption has gone in and, you know, helped most of, or a lot of these mobile homes not have any taxes at all.
All right.
I just, exempting LA Properties?
Yeah, that's my question. What's that about?
That one was a, a division of, they had put new, new lots there, and so that one I need to do a lot more research on. But we still, we, we wouldn't lose the foreclosure, because we could always do it next year.
Counsel Green.
So, so LA Properties owns a mobile home that was, that they haven't paid taxes on? Aren't they the property, aren't they the owner of the park?
Not any longer. They have sold that park.
Okay.
But the mobile home that was on a lot that got re, redone, so they have the wrong mobile home price in that, so I have to do some more work with the assessor on it.
And, but you still have the opportunity next year, if, when it comes back, if there's something that we can do about it.
Correct.
We're trying to keep people in their homes, not businesses, from paying taxes.
Well, one of the things, last year when I came, it was, I had asked for $4,210, and currently now, the only, those mobile homes that are left is $1,900. So I do continually collect the money.
Thank you. Any other questions? Patty, can I get a roll call?
Counsel Gilly?
Yes.
Counsel DeBrito?
Yes.
Counsel Klepak?
Yes.
Counsel Green?
Yes.
Counsel Morris?
Yes.
Counsel Frankie?
Yes.
Counsel McCormick?
Yes.
The vote is seven in favor and zero opposed.
Moving on to Resolution 282023.
Refer to the planning board zoning amendment residential D.
Move to adopt.
Second.
And this is the building behind the church, correct?
No, it's next to the church, the rectory.
Okay, the rectory.
Yep.
Any discussion? Patty, can I get a roll call?
Counsel Gilly?
Yes.
Counsel DeBrito?
Yes.
Counsel Klepak?
Yes.
Counsel Green?
Yes.
Counsel Morris?
Yes.
Counsel Frankie?
Yes.
Counsel McCormick?
Yes.
The vote is seven in favor and zero opposed.
Moving on to Ordinance 292023.
Amend the zoning ordinance, six Cool Street.
And this is the old water district?
Correct.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion? Patty, can I get a roll call?
Counsel Gilly?
Yes.
Counsel DeBrito?
Yes.
Counsel Klepak?
Yes.
Counsel Green?
Yes.
Counsel Morris?
Yes.
Counsel Frankie?
And this is our first vote on this one, right? New business?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
All right, yes.
Counsel McCormick?
Yes.
The vote is seven in favor and zero opposed.
Moving on to Resolution 302023.
Appointment of city counselors to various committees.
Move to adopt.
Discussion? Patty, can I get a roll call?
Counsel Gilly?
Yes.
Counsel DeBrito?
Yes.
Counsel Klepak?
Yes.
Counsel Green?
Yes.
Counsel Morris?
Yes.
Counsel Frankie?
Yes.
Counsel McCormick?
Yes.
The vote is seven in favor and zero opposed.
Moving on to Resolution 312023.
Appointment to the housing committee.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Can we get the name of the person being added to the housing committee?
There are two, Diane Townsend, she's representing nonprofit provider of affordable housing, and Amy Matera, a real estate professional.
Thank you. Any discussion? Patty, can I get a roll call?
Counsel Gilly?
Yes.
Counsel DeBrito?
Yes.
Counsel Klepak?
Yes.
Counsel Green?
Yes.
Counsel Morris?
Yes.
Counsel Frankie?
Yes.
Counsel McCormick?
Yes.
The vote is seven in favor and zero opposed.
Moving on to Resolution 322023.
One moment, please, while I flip through my pages. Sorry about that.
Authorize to empower the city manager, assistant city manager, finance director, or their designees to be signatories on bank accounts maintained by the city of Waterville.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion? We'll put Bill on the bank account. All right, Patty.
We're, we're, we're putting all future assistant city managers on the bank account? Mm-hmm.
That's, that's correct. We were making some investment changes, and then one of the new banks that we're dealing with thought it would be best to have everybody on the resolution adopted by the council, so that we wouldn't have to come back each time we had to add a different signatory to those bank accounts.
Sounds efficient.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Patty, can I get a roll call?
Counsel Gilly?
Yes.
Counsel DeBrito?
Yes.
Counsel Klepak?
Yes.
Counsel Green?
Yes.
Counsel Morris?
Yes.
Counsel Frankie?
Yes.
Counsel McCormick?
Yes.
Vote is seven in favor and zero opposed.
All right, moving on to council comments. All right, seeing none, can I get a motion to?
Motion to adjourn.
All right.